Call the June 11th, 2019, meeting of the Portsmouth City Council to order. And Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle?
Here.
Mr. Clark?
Here.
Mr. Glover?
Here.
Mr. Bur.
Here.
Mr. Moody?
Here.
Ms. Thomas. Mayor Rowe?
Here. And before we get into the agenda, just a note of explanation. We're trying this new format. We have heard that the people who attend the work session have a difficult time hearing the members of council because the seats are behind city council. And so with this way, the public is not sitting behind city council. And so with that, this is an experiment, and it may become our permanent format. And we welcome any feedback from anybody after the meeting. With that, our first item is the Virginia Port Authority Annual Report, and we have Dustin Reinhardt. Would you introduce yourself?
Sure. First, Mr. Mayor, I'm Mr. Mayor of City Council. And staff, thank you so much for having me here. I do always have to start off with, although my last name is Reinhardt, I'm not related to John in any way. It's actually spelled differently. But thank you again for having me here. I am the Director of State and Local Government Affairs for the Port of Virginia. So if there are any questions today or down the road that you have what we're doing operationally, or any questions as far as transportation, things like that, that's what I'm here for, is to be of service to y'all, any information y'all have to request here. And I do want to try and stick to the time limit, so if I do go too quickly, just raise your hand, somebody slow down. If you have a question during the middle of it, please feel free to ask as well. But I do want to start off with, again, the thing we always are talking about is global trade, global shipment. And there are the countries that we're shipping to, but really what I want to show here is that the shipping lines we have, those shipping lines are now being consolidated. And we talk about all the time, ships are getting bigger, the containers, more containers are going on a single ship, and they're actually pinpointing only a few ports as opposed to all the ports on the East Coast. So they want to generally stop at three ports. We want to make the Port of Virginia one of those three. And that's why we're doing all these operations that you see today, and when it comes to on terminal, but also our preparations within dredging. And this was the new normal, 90% of those cargo containers are within three alliances. So they're all consolidating, trying to save costs because shipping lines for years have been losing money. So that is a trend we see industry-wise of consolidation. And of course, our wider, deeper, and safer is what we've been kind of on the mantra for many years now, and we're actually pushing that forward today. We will see that with the 55 feet making us the deepest port on the East Coast, continuing to make us the deepest port on the East Coast. I do believe South Carolina will be at 52 feet for about a year and a half, but fear not, that's not a way to have any company make a major change of location. With that, we are going to have an RFP out this June for the job of dredging, and in January of 2020, we expect to have dredges in the water. And that would be at the first meeting point right there east, excuse me, west of the Thimble Shoal, I was just trying to say Bay Ridge Channel, but Thimble Shoal West.
Dustin, can we ask questions of you as you go along?
Yeah, you could ask, absolutely.
Is South Carolina at 52 now?
They are not. They're on their way to 52 feet. And while we're here, I could show you that South Carolina is about a billion-dollar project, Georgia is about a billion-dollar project, New York, New Jersey, they had to raise a bridge, and they have bedrock, it's about $2.7 billion. Ours is $350 million, thankfully, for Crane Island and the natural harbor we have.
What is the limiting factor in South Carolina? Why not 55?
Really, the limiting factor right now is a lot of environmental. I don't believe they're prepared for all of that aspects to it. They're going through a really, really tough time, as well as Georgia, with mitigation, environmental mitigation. The way they have to dredge, they have a much smaller window, and so much more mitigation they're having to do as opposed to us where we've had this harbor for years. Mitigation is next to none. We say practically zero. So we're able to go forward really, really quickly. And again, this is just the plot of where we're going to be. You can see the terminals here in Hampton Roads. And of course, it gets deeper out there the further we go out because, you know, open seas get a little more rough. And of course, that widening aspect is to allow the two-way traffic. And as you know, we have the four terminals down here, Newport News, Marine Terminal, Portsmouth Marine Terminal in Vig here, and Portsmouth, as well as Norfolk International Terminals. But I do want to take a few seconds to talk about our two inland ports, in Richmond Marine Terminal, which we are leasing and taking over operations, have taken over operations, and in Virginia Inland Port, which is in Front Royal, which is train to truck, truck to train, so no ships are servicing in that area. But when we start up there in the northern area of Virginia Inland Port, this terminal is going to be expanding, actually doubling. We got a build grant to give a gradient separation in rail area, which thankfully they are able to get that easier because they're in a rural community, and we're doubling the track service. So we're going to double our services here in Virginia Inland Port, again, focusing not just on our terminals here in Hampton Roads, but the holistic approach of what we're trying to do as a network for the Port of Virginia.
How many TEUs do they handle per year?
They handle about 30,000 a year. So we're expecting growth about, hopefully, the next year or two, another 5,000, and incremental as we could see that. And then we'll go down a little south to Richmond. This terminal, Richmond Marine Terminal, is a barge service, so every container that is on that barge is a truck off the road. The waterway does not have to be repaved, and we kind of like that. Of course, traffic is much limited, too, on there. We're also adding a new drop lot, so it's going to turn into a 24-hour facility practically, and repairing all these little things that really weren't caught up to date with the city when they're operating this with their third management company that they had in operation. So again, second barge service, so we're going to have daily service there, back and forth.
And the ship-to-shore crane is really a crane, it looks like?
Yes. It's a real crane. And this is across the river here at Norfolk International Terminals. We're expecting late 2020 for this project to be complete. This is using the same technology that we have right now at Virginia International Gateway, using rail-mounted gantry cranes, automatic stacking cranes, and shuttle cars. So it's really exciting, and we're getting two new cranes, of which we have four now at Virginia National Gateway. So again, consolidation, so we're getting these bigger ships. We have to be able to work a lot more containers, and that's why we're focusing on capacity optimization, and utilization of the footprint we already have. So here we are in Virginia National Gateway. This is the rendering. This is what we wanted it to look like when we thought about it. And this is what it looks like today. So you can see it's completely, all the stacks are finished, 13 new stacks, and you can see the four new large ship-to-shore cranes in as well. When you look to the right side, you can see the rail yard being doubled as well. So we're in a very fast movement for this facility. I feel like it went really quickly and really smoothly, doubling our rail service. We have four cantilever rail-mounted gantry cranes, and added 8,000 new feet of rail yard. And those gantry cranes are a way to move the container from above the crane to the side, so we could optimize the ability for trucks or hustlers to get to them. We've extended the berth to about 680 feet. When this terminal was originally built, it was to have three ships being able to call at the same time. When the ships get bigger, we need to make our berth a little bigger so we can ensure we have three ships there as well. So optimally, we'd like to have two ULCVs there, and one normal-sized ship is what we call it, but we're building it to be able to house three ULCVs at one time. Again, doubling our stack capacity, 13 new stacks, that means it would be 26 new rail-mounted gantry cranes on there. And again, that was a part of the largest rail-mounted gantry crane purchase in the history of the industry, with 87 total, splitting between here and the optimization project in Norfolk International Terminals. Between this and the expansion, not only are we able to kind of level out our capacity, so anytime you're trying to grab something, you don't want to grab one thing to move it to get to another thing, so it's able to speed our services, but we've also been able to is shut down a few of the older stacks. We have a three-phase project to refurbish those old cranes, because they've been running 24/7, nonstop, the entire time, 12 years ago when they actually were put in service. So that company doing that is Adarona, it's a Virginia company. You could tell when you're looking at the new ones how fast they're going to the old ones, and when you see the old stacks that are being brought to speed, they're going just as fast and just as smoothly as the new ones are. We also added four new additional truck lanes. This not only can service a trucker who is coming in from motor carriers, but also makes a better flow. The other thing we've added here, and again, I believe I spoke about it last time when we were just entering the truck reservation system, is that this has been able, the truck reservation system has been able to level the field when we're actually getting trucks on the terminal. It's able to level capacity, so we're also even, we know that this truck is going to be coming at nine o'clock, so we can have that container ready. And it allows us to have a better adjustment of how many trucks are on terminal. The gate isn't the main factor when we have the trucks here, it's how many trucks we have on terminal and how safe we could be able to operate the facility with how much traffic we have on that terminal. That's what the main thing we've been able to do with the truck reservation system. Now, I believe we're operating about 85% of those reservations are done under the 60-minute mark. Industry standard is what we're shooting for. And then we have the missed reservations down to about 5%. That's really nice, because when we first started off, it was really difficult for a company that's been around for decades to switch their entire operations to this. So it really showed how we were able to work with the motor carrier companies, ensure that we can work together in a new technology, in an industry that doesn't necessarily always like to change, which I think is most industries. And then these are the four new ship-to-shore cranes. These are the largest cranes in the Western Hemisphere. They're right here in the city of Portsmouth at Virginia National Gateway. These will service the largest ships that will call to our berth, but also in decades to come is what we are expecting. We didn't want to purchase them and realize we've got to make them bigger. So these are the largest in the Western Hemisphere. Two will be added at NIT as well. We're working out with the tariff system on that with steel. That's TBD, but these were exempted, so we are good with those. And they are in working condition pulling cargo containers off ships currently. This is the way we kind of operate. We have about 3% barge, 34% rail, 63% truck. So again, when we emphasize that truck, we are trying to make sure that is the best service we can give to them. That's why we've been implementing the TRS system, expanding our gates, trying to make the on- and off-terminal last mile, first mile, last mile, very smooth. Right now, with 34% of rail, we are focusing on growth of our rail. Our growth in rail means that we can have more industries be affected there in the Midwest and the heartland. Now, that would seem like we're not servicing Virginia, but really what we're able to do is when you're having ship lines know they can get cargo containers to Chicago in a day and a half, they're going to come to our port and make sure that that container is going to go through Virginia to Chicago, which means we can, you're able to pull in more first-in, last-out vessels. Any company that sees more first-in, last-out vessels, whether they're importers or exporters, they know they get their product the quickest. And that's how we market and be able to bring companies here to Virginia.
Dustin, how do you create capacity in the rails? Is it, you add more rail to create capacity, or you go higher? How do you do that?
Well, a lot of it right now is in the marshalling yards, when we have all these trains coming together, and they connect them all. So right now, we are working in Norfolk with a small marshalling yard here. We have a marshalling yard in Suffolk as well, which I believe both Norfolk and Portsmouth have a water line through there, and we're working to do that. So we're working expansion at a massive rate, using DRPT, Department of Rail and Public Transit Funds, for the Rail Enhancement Fund, to be able to fund those. Me, right now, have been in that, trying to expand that marshalling yard in Suffolk for, before I got to the port, and I believe it was like five years prior to me getting there. Right now, we kind of hit a great point where all the lawyers have gotten together and think that they can get this all done by the end of this month, hopefully, years in the making. And I believe it does have to go in front of Norfolk City Council by July 26th agenda, so if it's done by July 2nd, we could have that moving forward. As many years as they've been trying to do that, it's been kind of, we got that email that we think we got this done, then it was a little party for the Government Affairs Department and the board. But yes, our growth in rail is definitely focused on the Midwest. We have our marketing communications team doing special advertising within companies there. We're reaching out to a lot of farmers, a lot of companies that are shipping grains.
Are all the markets now able to accommodate double stacks?
I believe that we are shipping through, yes. I think Baltimore just got the capacity to be doing double stacks. We are taking most of those cargo containers out. It does give them the ability to play a little play, but again, they're trying, these ports, these ship lines are not trying to hit five to six terminals anymore. It's going to be two to three, and you have to pass the Port of Virginia to get to Baltimore, not to mention they don't have that depth, so.
Now, vessel calls are down 7% at the four marine terminals that the Port Authority operates, because ships are getting bigger. What about the ships that are coming into Hampton Roads that don't call on the four?
Right. Great question. So they are getting, they will be getting bigger. One of the best partners we've had in our efforts to go wider, deeper, and safer is the coal industry. If you could get a bigger ship, what it means, you get more coal, and again, consolidate those prices, and you don't have to pay as much. As I believe is a West Virginia Congresswoman who put in some of our amendments to be able to get this moving forward for us. So I don't know the exact numbers on that, that'd be a question for the Maritime Association, but they absolutely are getting bigger, and the coal industry was a major factor in getting that done. Cargo containers make a lot of money. We is the largest coal port in the East Coast, meaning the entire port. That was the straw that broke the camel's back, if you will. To move forward, this is just, again, this comparison here at Vig of how we're able to turn our traditional, our traditional turn times have gone down significantly when we built that capacity and implemented the TRS. And being able to work with motor carriers was very, very rewarding. We went from a monthly meeting to a weekly meeting. And you have to see the hidden things on here, too. You know, if you have a slower, quicker turn time, that trucker is getting more turns, so more money in his pocket. But also, like anybody else, if you're running an hour behind, and you've got to go on the road, and you've got to be somewhere in 30 minutes, you might have that accelerator pushed a little further down, so hopefully it makes these roads a little safer. They're staying on time, and they're not rushing through areas too much. And again, I like to talk about the system that we have in transportation. We've done a lot on terminal and in the harbor, over $1.3 billion worth of huge projects. What we have as a port now has been focusing in the government fair side and the engineering side, is how are we getting these things to where we need to. So again, we could see the entire transportation as a system for the rail here. That shows you that we're servicing Midwestern partners, and we're trying to grow that again to 40% of our capacity for moving rail. The other aspect that we're trying to do is we're looking at the entire greater state of Virginia, not just Hampton Roads. I know that we sit on the Hampton Roads TPO, we're on HR Tech, is just, I don't believe we are a voting member, but we're having a special emphasis on how we can move freight and ensuring that we have all these areas that are having essentially multiple cities that speak as one organization in regional fashion, to be able to put in long-term plans for the transportation and ensuring that, hey, we know that there's a facility here that's 500 acres that might be, you know, a port industry. We need to make sure we're preparing for that. So you're looking at, you know, the Bowers Hill intersection. It's awful, we know that, so we're trying to help with that. We're looking, again, across the state, so I'm focusing heavily on metropolitan planning organizations, trying to get the Port of Virginia in there and within their long-term plans, and ensuring that not only does it make an ability for me going to general somebody and say, hey, your MPO is something that really supports this measure, but as we all know, the city of Portsmouth is asking money from the federal government, it's a big ask. If you have the HR, you know, Hampton Roads TPO asking for you as a regional ask, I mean, it's a little bigger stick to carry. So that's what we're focusing on and trying to partner with localities in that fashion. And the growth of the port is imminent, but also the growth of this area, so we need to make sure that we have that long-term goal and ensuring that we're having safety of transportation and alternative transportation routes. We want to see the barge grow even further. We'd love to take more trucks off the road. And it creates a nice little hub economically, other areas of Virginia.
Have you all taken a position on the alternatives for Bowers Hill yet?
I don't believe we have official position to it. I know that, last time I saw, there is a lot of little fixes they're trying to do in a short-term area, and then long-term, I think they have to do a total reconstruction.
I strongly recommend that you work with our city manager's office and her transportation team.
Absolutely.
Because this is a big deal for Portsmouth.
Absolutely. It's a big deal for Portsmouth and the port. It's a win-win if we can get that.
It's our front door from the west.
Absolutely. I know we've, again, taken a special emphasis on the transportation aspect, and I just had a conversation about some railroad signs that we're talking about. So we have our eye on that. We're definitely trying to work hand-in-hand when it comes to the engineering department here in Portsmouth and the city planning as well. And as I told you about the system across the state, this is the reason why. Not only do we have areas that, you know, have transportation needs, but we have companies, and these companies are using the Port of Virginia all across Virginia. So it just, it makes sense. And we need to make sure that we have an impact in areas like Hampton Roads, Richmond, and Front Royal, but in areas like Dublin, Virginia, areas in Roanoke, areas that you would not think as they would be essentially port people, but they are. We need to make sure we have that story being put out. So as these companies grow around, this is just the calendar year of last year, you know, 1,900, excuse me, 1,900 square feet, 48 businesses, $980 million of growth here in Virginia. And of course, more containers, we always like to say, means more jobs. And you can see over 3,000 jobs created across Virginia just of the companies expanding or moving here who are port companies. And of course, we had an emphasis on our terminal to make sure we have some more reefer stacks. That's one of the businesses we're trying to grab. And when we all work together, as you saw, we could have the ability to have a big win up at City Portsmouth when it came to preferred freezer, which is a great event, great to have the governor there as well. And we hope to have more growth here in Portsmouth, working together with the team, with Mr. Moore here. And again, I end on that because we do have tons and tons of partners. You know, VMA is definitely a partner we have and hold very valued. But again, you can see local, state, and federal government, we do need to work together and be transparent. That's what I am here for. So hopefully, we could do much more work together and get more companies here. But it is a large, large industry. The port itself, there's more terminals here in Hampton Roads, there's a whole lot more terminals here in Hampton Roads. We hope to get wind energy to Hampton Roads. So we're looking with tons of partners, whether it's economic development in the state, the local level. So I do want to emphasize that. And of course, just to give you, let y'all know, we do have our annual aid to local ports program, so please apply if there's any other port programs that you could have that has, you know, a shot at getting part of the $1 million that we have annually. And again, we work here, we try to work within our communities, and these are some of the ports that we sit on. I do want to highlight Virginia DHCD, Department of Housing and Community Development. I know there's guidelines that just came out for the special fund for the host cities, the Port Revitalization Fund, I believe, Port Community Host Cities Revitalization Fund.
The $1 million.
Yeah, there you go, $1 million. We're here as a partner when need help, and of course, if you guys have a company that you're looking at, we want to get that here as soon as possible. So we're definitely involved in it. We also, I believe we were in the parade here recently. Was there a parade here recently?
Police march.
The police march, yeah, okay, yeah. They marched in the parade. And of course, our Maritime Incidents Response Team, they do a lot of training with the fire department, of course, any kind of thing that's happening near the terminal, we're coordinating safety programs. So we're here as an asset, but also as a friend. Hopefully, we grow the economy together. So if there's any questions, I do.
Any questions, further questions? Well, thank you very much for this very comprehensive report. We're glad that you're our partner.
Absolutely. And you have my email.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Thank you, sir. Mr. Pace?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. At this particular point, Mr. Theodore Falk, Chief Financial Officer with the Portsmouth Public Schools, will provide a FY 2019 second and third quarter financial report.
And I think, you know, Dr. Bracy is here. I'd like to acknowledge you, Dr. Bracy, if you would stand up so I could see you. Thank you, sir, for coming.
Good evening, Mayor Rowe. I'm Vice Mayor Lucas Burke. City Council members, Mr. Pace, I stand before you tonight to present the second and third quarter financial report for FY 1819 for the Portsmouth Public Schools. This report was submitted to the city clerk on April 29, 2019. This report provides a fiscal year-to-date report of all revenues and expenditures through March 31, 2019, presented on a cash basis. It includes all cash received and cash paid through March 31, 2019, through the five funds that the school board has. We'll give you an overview of our school board funds. The general fund is our main operating fund for the day-to-day operations of the school division. It's the largest fund encompassing about 75% of our total revenues. Our second fund is a risk management fund. It is an internal service fund that captures expenditures for the self-insured health and dental programs, workers' comp, property, and the property and casualty insurance premiums. Thirdly, we have the grants fund. That encompasses all of our federal, state, and other grant programs that have specified purposes. Some of those programs include Title I and the special ed grants under federal revenues. Thirdly, the cafeteria fund is an enterprise fund that accounts for our food services operations. And then lastly, we have our textbook fund, which accounts for textbook purchases. Beginning with the general fund, our largest fund, the total revised budget for the general fund for 1819 is $146.5 million. The total revenues through March 2019 totaled $104.9 million. Those revenues were received from the specific areas as listed: state funds, $52.3 million; local funds, $39.6 million; state sales tax, $7.8 million; federal funds of $628,000; other funds of $1 million, approximately $1 million, which are funds such as Medicaid reimbursements, indirect costs from grant programs. And then lastly, FY 2018 reappraparated funds that the city appropriated to the schools in this fiscal year totaled about $605,000. Going to the expenditure side of the house, total general fund expenditures at the end of March were $99.2 million, broken up into following categories: instruction, $72.8 million; administration, attendance, and health at $6.3 million; pupil transportation at $4.1 million; operations and maintenance at $10.5 million; debt and fund transfers of $1.1 million; and then lastly, technology of $5.5 million. The burn rate, which compares total expenditures to the current revised total budget, was 67.71% in March of 2019. When you compare that to the burn rate of 67.67% in March 2018, they were fairly similar at that point. And also, encumbrances outstanding at the end of March 2019 were total $3.1 million. Moving on to our other funds, our grant fund received about $10.9 million through March of 2019, and it had $12.4 million of expenditures. Just to keep in mind, granted, most of our grants are reimbursement-type grants. Therefore, we expend the funds before they're reimbursed from state, federal, and other organizations. So therefore, the difference between those two numbers would be the accounts receivable at March 31, 2019. The risk management fund received $12.5 million through the end of March, and had $16.3 million in expenditures. And keep in mind, the city holds a reserve of about $5.2 million on behalf of the schools for the risk management fund in the case of overages in that fund. The textbook fund had revenues of $1 million and expenditures of $2.3 million. And then lastly, the cafeteria fund had revenues of $5.2 million and expenditures of $5.5 million. That is also a reimbursable base-type grant, because the majority of the revenues come from the federal reimbursements from the school breakfast and lunch program, and therefore, those revenues get closer as you get to the end of the year. And with that, that's the end of my report. I'm happy to present that to you. If there are any questions, I'd be sure to happy to answer.
Yeah, back in April, there was some, a lot of discussion over $11 million discrepancy and seemed to be the difference in the reports on the city side versus the school administration. Did we ever get a full explanation on what caused that?
The discrepancy between those two reports are based on different bases for the reports and different timing on those two reports.
Did we verify that? Was that verified?
Yes, sir. That was verified with the Virginia Department of Education, who gives us the rules and the regulations regarding the annual school report, and then also the CAFR.
So the explanation was all one of timing?
Timing and different bases on the reports, sir.
What made the timing show $11 million difference?
It is a cumulative report over a number of years, and therefore, the timing over that report, over those years, the timing differences have happened through then. Those reports are not made to compare to each other, according to the information we received from the Virginia Department of Education.
Well, Mayor, I think at some point in time, we need probably a little more detailed explanation from our finance department in conjunction with the schools.
It's very confusing.
Yeah. And believe me, I'm confused with it. I'm not saying, you know, somebody left out $11 million. Obviously, they didn't. But I think the public and this council needs to be grounded in more of a detailed explanation than just a generalization.
What do you all think about asking the city manager and Dr. Bracy to come up with a briefing that takes place later in the summer that could get us past the end of the fiscal year? And maybe they're going to be busy with budget closeouts, and look to a briefing maybe in the March or something, not in the March, in the August. Gee, I wish it was in the March. Is that okay?
Well, I think if the goal is to gain better clarity.
And that's the goal.
With this body, to understand the process, I think that's a worthy goal.
That's the goal. It's not adversarial, let me.
Right.
Not at all.
We just need to understand.
Yeah.
Just educate us.
Yep, so pretend that we.
So how does?
That we know nothing and build it from there.
Yes, sir.
So how, as a body, do we want this served to us? Do we want two time periods and do a comparative analysis? I mean.
Whatever works to get us to a point where we understand it. I mean, and I would suggest that it be very basic so that we just assume that we don't know anything and build it from there.
I think that's a good assumption.
Okay. Good. Thank you for this report, and thank you for the comprehensiveness of it. Mr. Pace?
Oh, yes, sir.
I don't know if maybe Dr. Bracy's here to address it, but a lot, we've read a lot and heard a lot this week about security at Churchland High School. Is someone prepared to speak to that at this work session?
Solomon?
Dr. Bracy.
Welcome again, sir.
Yes. And I had reached out to ask for specifics in terms of what you would like to know in reference to that. But pardon me, good evening to everyone.
You're good.
I apologize.
No, you're good. Go ahead.
Well, first of all, the specifics of the incident that took place at Churchland, you know, of course, I can't get into any details with that because at some point, there may be an appeal, and our board would have to hear that. So I wouldn't want to put anything out in reference to that. But as far as processes itself, and Attorney Ashby queued me up and said that there may be discussion in regards to that, about how the funds that we use are expended toward safety measures. So let me go over this, and then if there's anything else that pertains to that or any questions you have, I'll be glad to answer what I can. So we go back to the million dollar, we call it a grant because of the one-time deal that you all worked out and Dr. Patton and I worked through. So as you were with that, we were able to go ahead and expand and upgrade all of the security systems, the security cameras within all of our schools. So all schools now have the capability to access the cameras from home. The administrators can do that, and they can pull them up in HD. And we have them placed strategically throughout all of the schools where some of the blind spots may be, so that if something does occur, we have them, we can pull it up, and they've been working, working well. We have the Raptor system, which is, we use for the visitor ID. And that is, of course, to check any sex offenders that may have come into the building. And that has, that has worked well. I mean, we have seen the benefit of it. I guess in some cases, if people may be deterred to come in if they know that we have that system in place. Also, with the, with the increase of the amount that you gave us in the budget for this fiscal year, we were able to increase, what was the number, Mr. Falk, seven or eight? Seven SSO security office, school security officers in the buildings. So now, we were able to cover the additional, now that we, now we have all of our schools with at least one SSO. So elementary schools didn't have that before. This year, in this year's budget, we will have our two preschools covered. So all schools would have at least a school security officer in those, in those buildings. And also, in our budget for 1920, we have an additional SSO at our high school because we, with the manning, the station of the Raptor system that pull one of the security officers out of the rotation. So we wanted to particularly at the high school, put that project by getting there because in some cases, I see Norcom that has three floors, and with, what is it, Wilson with two, well, no, Churchland with two, we wanted to make sure that we had the coverage in Wilson and Churchland cover a lot of square footage. So we wanted to make sure we had those bodies and that to help.
So there's a real, a real police officer and a security officer in our schools?
We have four. We will have four school security officers, one SRO, one police officer.
One police officer.
Yes. And the way, the way that we have it set up now is that all the secondary schools have one assigned school resource officer. In the past couple of years, there may have, the high school person was covering the middle school and an elementary school. So now, with the secondary schools covered, they still share duties with our elementary schools, but it's, we have more coverage now. If something happens, you know, we can, we can get someone there in those elementary schools. And also, we, with those funds, we upgraded and replaced the school radios, so as far as communication goes, we have the new, the walkie-talkie systems in place. And two of those that we purchased, we wanted to make sure that that could be a direct link to the police department. So that's in place as well. So if something does happen, you know, the school security officers can call right in to the dispatcher, I guess, that the Portsmouth Police Department uses.
At each school?
Each school, yes. Yeah, each school. And in my office, we have that, as well as some of the other departments throughout the division. We do have metal detectors in our secondary schools, so all of our middle and high schools. And I guess the question, I'm sure that, that everybody always asks, is that do all the students go through the metal detectors? Well, they, those metal detectors are there. We use them, but what we do, we use them on a random basis. So every, every day, there will be a different number of the number of which student will we pull. So if we say every, every 25 students we pull, if that's the number of the day, then those students will, will go through the metal detector. And if it goes off, then we will see what's going on. If there's, we may do a bus, an entire bus, where an entire bus will go through where we check. The problem is, if we have them, why isn't everybody going through them? Because it's a manpower issue. You know, it's sort of like when you go to the airport, they want you to arrive an hour and a half, two hours earlier. So that's where, that's the dilemma that we fall in, and most of the school divisions that have them do. So we do use them, we utilize them, but it's sort of, it's on a random. Now, for athletic events, they, we do make sure that all of the, I know at the high schools, that they go through the, they go through the metal detectors for that. That's all I had that I wanted to cover, but I'm sure, I'll take questions, Mayor.
Any questions?
Yep.
Well, what, what my concern is was some of the comments that the system worked as it was designed on a student who brought a loaded pistol handgun to Churchland High School. And all of those things that you just mentioned, the cameras, the school security officer, the random metal detectors, he must have been number 26. So apparently, he didn't go through. In spite of all of that, the security person that day, fortunately, was a student who told somebody that, hey, this guy's got a loaded pistol. So, you know, if we're gonna, at sporting events, send everybody through a metal detector, I think it's something that needs to be required in schools. I don't have to tell you some of the tragedies that has happened. And to do it on a random basis is rolling the dice with students' safety. And that shouldn't be based on a lottery. Are we going to do this 25 today and the 25 tomorrow? That's not good enough, in my opinion. And I was extremely alarmed that, that the spokesperson, and I won't mention the gentleman's name, said that, well, we, we use the metal detectors when they exit school. Well, common sense would dictate, you know, they don't, they don't check you after you deboard a plane, they check you when you're getting on the plane. There lies the danger. And we, we need to ramp that up. This, this random stuff and the lottery stuff in today's society is not good enough. And we, we need to give the public more of assurance that when they send their kids off to Churchland, any of their schools, that they're going to be safe, and they're not going to be in a classroom or in the school where somebody's got a loaded pistol. So that, I was extremely disappointed at the reaction to that, quite frankly. And you might want to go back and view the comments that were made, but if I was a parent with a kid in school, I would have been extremely, extremely alarmed at what that gentleman responded to the media on what was done. Pretty much that everything worked as designed. Well, we know it didn't, and we need to fix it, in my opinion.
Well, yeah, and I will go back and take a look at it because I'm not aware of any school that, that screens on the, at the end of the school day, if that was, if that was mentioned. I don't, I don't know of any, any of our schools that do that. But in, but in terms of the screening of all students, you know, that, that's an issue that, that everybody struggles with, with those school divisions that have metal detectors, and some don't. Some don't have any, any of that. But we do have it in our secondary schools. So if that's something that we want to look at, then we need to talk about, that's going to take some resources to, to make that happen. I'm not opposed to it, but I think that that's something that, that's just more than myself, it's going to take Dr. Patton, we may need to get liaisons together, to talk about that, what that looks like. What are some of the, we're going to have some discussion because we got to talk about, you know, if you're going to try to screen everyone, then you're talking about time, the time that that's going to take.
Well, let me say this. If that situation would have turned into a worst-case scenario, I guarantee you, you'd be standing up there saying, yes, we need to do it immediately. We need to do it yesterday.
Well, I'd probably be asking you, I'd probably be asking, look, it would be nice if we could have that.
No, it's not nice, it's needed.
But what, what can we do to put that in place? Let me finish now, let me finish. That's, that's what I'm saying. I'm not opposed to that. Anything that we can do, I'm all about safety and safety of our students and our staff. But what you're asking, I think is a great idea. Let's talk about it.
All right, we got two more questions.
And that was, that was my concern or my, my comment about it. I know that it's going to require more manpower and more resources, and with Nate not being the liaison, I wanted to be able to sit down and look at the scenarios. I know one of the things that we had discussed in one of our liaison meetings before was the capacity study to see, you know, you know, what the capacity of all of the schools are, you know, what it is at this current date, and where we can trim back or make some adjustments or something with that at that point. So I think that's definitely something we, we need to add to our next agenda item when we meet.
Liaisons.
Liaisons, yes. And, and one other thing, you mentioned about the Raptor system tracking just the sexual offenders. I mean, does it track anything else, like no, no felons or no other?
Yes, just if you're on a sex offender register.
Just a sex offender register.
Nate?
Reference to this, you know, I'm 100% behind the safety, and I previously have been a school resource officer, so I've been in that position. The one thing, you know, this is a great discussion, but in my opinion, I think we ought to pull the reins back a little bit, just in the sense that we need to go forward everything. We don't need to tell every security measure that we have in the schools in a public meeting because that makes it easier for somebody to come in and defeat these measures. So I'm all for, you know, when we meet and talk about measures and how we can make things better, I think we should be telling the public, and we should be making it as safe as possible and better forward. But we shouldn't tell all the details of everything we have because that, like I said, it makes it easier for somebody to come in and defeat those measures. So I'd be happy, you know, to do what we can to assist you in making that happen. But it's, it's just like a SWAT team. You don't tell everybody all the tools you have in the bag.
Good point. Paul?
It's something that really needs to be addressed immediately. The school board, we need to find money. And I'm 1,000% behind the safety of these kids. I can't say enough about that. But we, we have to chat a little and get to work a lot to put something in place that can remedy the loopholes or the problems that don't, don't provide the best safety that we can.
Thank you, Dr. Bracy. We'll leave this with the liaisons and you and Dr. Patton.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Let's go to the next item, Mr. Pace.
Mr. Mike Ammons, procurement administrator, will provide an update on the city's minority and women-owned business enterprises program. Stamen?
Okay, good evening, Mayor Rowe, members of council, Mr. Ashby, Mr. Pace, citizens and staff. My name is Mike Ammons, and I'm the purchasing officer for the city. Tonight, I will be providing an update on the city's minority and women-owned business enterprise program. A little bit of history, the city of Portsmouth completed its first disparity study in 2015. It was conducted by NGT and resulted, presented to city council in June of 2015. What it was done, the study was done to make sure, or to ensure, to find out whether or not the city had any disparity in the awarding of contracts to local minority-owned woman business enterprises. The study did find that there was a disparity that existed between the awarding of city contracts to local minority businesses. In 2016, city council adopted a resolution promoting the program and asked the city manager to go ahead and implement a program for the city of Portsmouth. The next two slides outline some of the, the items that was instituted by the city manager as part of our program. One of the first thing we looked at was our bidding opportunities. We do a major construction bid for both the city and the schools. And one of the areas that the study mentioned was the ability to have subcontractors work on the minority business side for some of the prime contractors. Some of the categories, the major category that we did not have a, a real good showing of was on the construction side of the house. And so what we attempted to do, and what we tried to do, was to develop bid language that required prime contractors to subcontract to the maximum extent possible to minority and woman-owned businesses. That's now a standard part of all our major construction bids. And again, we do bids for the schools as well during this process. One of the other steps we do, the state of Virginia has a set of pre-qualified minority and own woman business enterprises. To the maximum extent possible, we hit that list, we use that list for all of our low-dollar procurement items. We go straight to the list we use, and then we go ahead and, and let those businesses do work for us. We now have minority and woman-owned business participation goals in each of our contracts. Later on, during this presentation, you'll see some of the initial goals that were established by the study. And every project has a goal for minority business participation that's established by us on the city's side. We're going to have our second MWB workshop. We've been planning it for the August and September timeframe. What we want to do is have the local minority-owned businesses come to the city to find out how to do business with us. So these initiatives are, were put in place to get feedback and to ask them and to talk to them about how they could do business with us. Okay, we also, using the state's website, we post our bids on the state website. What that does for us, it gives us an opportunity because the state has a push-out list to minority and woman-owned businesses through the state's website. By us posting our bids on that website, we maximize our solicitation opportunity for minority and woman-owned businesses. Here are the initial goals that were set up by the study. These goals were established in 2015. These goals were established in 2015 and they were as a result of the city council action and resolution that adopted these goals back in 2015. My next slide is a snapshot of some of the things we've done. It's not, not an all-inclusive list, but just to give you an idea of when we add our terms and conditions to some of our bids, here are some of the things that we, we have managed to achieve over the last year and a half.
That's really good. Good job.
And some of our companies, they are, and it does, it's not reflected by this slide, but some of our companies are actually minority and woman-owned businesses as well. So we, we, we get some support from that. We get a lot of, of, not numbers, but we get a lot of ability to work with some, with folks because they are also considered minority and woman-owned businesses. Plans for the future, we want to continue to do workshops. We talk, when we have the workshops and we tell people how to do business with us, it works better because they have an understanding of how we need to have things and they have an understanding of what we're looking for. We're maintaining our local business contact. We find out that actually conversation is the best way to, to get to people, to talk to them. And we have a constant flow of people coming back and forth to our office talking to us. Looking at the region, there are, there were four studies done in this area. There's Hampton, Portsmouth Public Schools have done one, Virginia Beach has completed one, and then the city of Portsmouth has also done one. So talking to the other regional folks, get an idea about how they're doing business because we are considered to be in the same metropolitan statistical areas. So coordinating with other entities helps us get our, our ideas straight too as well. We will ensure that city council receive regular updates. You know, whenever you require it, we will be glad to come and give you an update. And we'll continue to use all available resources. Like I said, we, we do get good response from that state pre-qualified minority business list. They've done all the work for us and we can go there straight without going through our procurement process just to use them. And we also want to improve our electronic footprint. Social media is the wave of the future. We might as well take advantage of it. And I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Elizabeth?
I just want to comment that since Councilman Glover and Vice Mayor Lucas Burke and I are the only people in the room that, who own businesses that can't do business with the city of Portsmouth and own small and minority woman-owned businesses, I have been to two of the Portsmouth events for business owners and they're wonderful. They really are very well done. They've had good crowds, good participation. I have also been to one in Hampton where I can do business. And I can tell you, I'm very proud of the work that, that is done here. It's a lot, it's a lot more efficient to the business owner.
Yes, ma'am.
So I'm, I'm real proud of the way we're handling that.
Any questions?
A couple of questions. So I saw the slide and I understand the, the policy. How are we measuring it? I know you talked about we're using, you, you put some data up, but um, in terms of businesses within our city, the city of Portsmouth, are we measuring how we are, how this policy is impacting and creating opportunities for small women and minority businesses locally?
Yes, sir. To the maximum extent possible. And one of the things that we have to be careful of, because there's a lot of business in Portsmouth, but there's not a lot of businesses, or do not businesses that we can do business with. So we're looking at our, we maximize local business as much as possible. We just have to be careful that there's a lot of business out here in Portsmouth that we, that we don't have, that we don't do business with. But we do reach out to local businesses. We set up, we've set up meetings in the past to go out to business, some of them and talk to them.
Okay, and, and on the reporting side?
Yes, sir.
What's, what's the strategy from an informational standpoint? I know you said you'll, you'll inform us as needed, but, but, but is there, is there a process or you're going to do it on an as-needed basis? And, and the reason why I'm asking is because when I attended the, the MBW Expo?
Yes, sir.
And the Secretary of Commerce came down, Mr. Ball, he talked about some of the aspirational goals from a state level?
Right.
And how they really want to improve minority participation, and it's an equitable issue. It's an issue of equity and creating opportunities across the board. I know that Virginia is working hard to become the number one business state in the, in the, in the United States. So I just want to make sure that we're collaborating and we're all on the same page as we work to create those opportunities going forward.
Sorry.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council, the timetable for these updates is really driven by you all. What I will add to Mr. Ammons' presentation, of course, when we talk about construction, that is the area that, where we have a challenge. We have areas where we over-excel the MSA in terms of percentage of work also. But the, as he said, one of the drivers and one of the things we try to do as a city is we're going to try to match our needs as close as possible. One other thing Mr. Ammons didn't mention, while we talk about the city, as I'm sure all of you are aware, procurement has certain rules that doesn't allow you to strictly obtain services within the city, although we make that push and provide that information. So we talk about it regionally, matching what we do and what services we acquire compared to the region and what's available. And so those are going to be issues in my past lives dealing with diversity issues. I think the forefront and the frontier now is trying to grow your own, trying to grow more capacity in terms of the area or identify a larger capacity. But certainly that from a timetable, as we said when this first came out, it really depends on you all, what timetable you want to report back.
Let's do this, because we're at the end, near the end of one quarter, let's schedule the next, for the end of the next quarter, which is the first meeting in December. Is that available with everybody?
Yeah.
That's a good measurement.
Good measurement.
And Michael, thank you for your professionalism.
No problem.
Yeah. You're really good.
Good job.
Thank you.
Mr. Pace?
Yes, sir. At this particular time, Ms. Erin Trimier, Director of Public Utilities, will provide a brief overview and project update of the downtown master utility plan.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. The senior and I will give you a brief overview of the downtown master utility plan and also a status update of the current project. In 2008, the Department of Public Utilities completed the downtown master utilities study. This study was initiated due to the age of the infrastructure and the desire of the city to meet the needs of future development in the downtown area. The study included a condition assessment of the water, sanitary sewer and stormwater infrastructure, hydraulic modeling and an evaluation of the impact future development would have on the area. The outcome of the study indicated that the existing infrastructure was beyond its useful life and did not meet the current design standards. It would not be capable of handling the increased flows necessary to support redevelopment. The downtown area was divided into four quadrants as shown on the overhead and construction work in phase one began in 2012 and included installation of all new water and sanitary sewer lines, stormwater improvements and construction, construction of a new pump station at the corner of Washington and county streets.
Do you recall in round numbers what the cost of that project was?
It's about 12 million, including the pump station.
Okay. Not too shabby.
Upon completion of phase one, Public Utilities began design and construction of work in phase two. This phase incorporates an area of approximately 80 acres bound to the east and north by Crawford Street and Crawford Parkway, to the south by High Street and to the west by Washington Street. However, a project of this magnitude presented implementation challenges, including holding contract costs for durations exceeding two to three years. Therefore, phase two was broken into two parts for bidding purposes with a dividing line at Court Street as shown on the overhead. Phase two A was awarded to TA Sheets for approximately eight and a half million dollars and construction began in summer of 2017. It is anticipated this construction will be completed within the next month or two. Plans for phase two B have been completed and are currently under review by the city. This project area is from, encompasses an area from Court to Dinwiddie Street and between High Street and Crawford Parkway. It is anticipated that this work will go out to bed, out to bid sometime in July.
And what is your project estimate for part B?
It's approximately six million, but I haven't gotten it finalized.
So 14 million for two.
Yeah, it'll be close, a little bit less.
Almost $30 million, folks.
So far.
Yeah.
The design concept of this phase is in keeping with the master plan and the successful completion of the first two projects. The purpose of this project is to replace aged water and sanitary sewer lines, a third of which date back prior to 1910. In addition, the stormwater system has been evaluated and will be replaced or rehabilitated based on condition. While the project will improve surface drainage, the project's intent is not to eliminate flooding associated with large storm events. In addition, the project will ensure that the infrastructure is in place to support ongoing and future development in the area. All of this will be accomplished while at the same time making every effort to minimize the impact construction of this magnitude has on its residents and businesses in the Unlike phase one, where restoration was from right-of-way to right-of-way, the restoration within phase two B will continue to be confined to the roadway or curb to curb. This will allow for replacement of mainline infrastructure in the streets while minimizing the impact to curbs and sidewalks. The sanitary sewer laterals will be replaced to the right-of-way where a cleanout will be installed and water lines will be replaced to water meters. Where sidewalks and driveways are impacted, restoration will be in kind. Another reason for confining restoration to the streets and the project to that area is to minimize impact to the trees. As you recall, prior to initiating phase two, we engaged the services of a licensed arborist and a licensed landscape architect to evaluate the impact and did an analysis tree by tree of the age of the tree and what would happen if we went on with construction. Therefore, we've minimized it curb to curb so we don't, minimize that impact. When streets are restored, the finishes, including surface treatment and parking striping will be in kind. A project of this magnitude has an impact to residents and businesses in the area. With this in mind, the project is implemented with an approach to minimize inconvenience. To do that, phase two B will be subdivided into smaller one or two-block work areas with full road closures in each work zone. This allows contractors full access to the area, but also requires that all work should be completed, including restoration, prior to opening of the area. This approach deviates from typical construction where a contractor would install the water line and then come back and do the sewer line and then come back and do restoration and keeps the area under construction for an extended period of time. By doing a smaller block-by-block area, it reduces the impact directly in front of residents and businesses to a duration of about two to four months. Prior to and during construction, the Department of Public Utilities works closely with emergency services, waste management, schools and other outside agencies to make sure that these services are maintained throughout construction. Residents and businesses will continue to have pedestrian access to their property at all times, although street parking will not be available in the area of a construction zone. In addition, residents and businesses are notified in advance of any service interruptions that are associated with transferring services from the old to new lines. While the city works with Draper Aiden to complete the final design in preparation for the July bid date, Public Utilities will continue their community outreach. This includes meetings with Old Town, specifically the Old Town Business Association. In addition, Public Utilities will be holding an open house to provide residents and businesses an opportunity to discuss the project in detail as it pertains to their property. We will also post updates on the city website and at the city PCTV channel.
Questions?
You said 1901 was the oldest of all of the?
About a third of our infrastructure in this area dates back prior to 1910.
Okay. So do we have some kind of study or some kind of report that says, you know, in 20, 40 years? I mean, how do we know when we have to upgrade again or do we just go on when there are instances where we have backups or flooding or?
Well, there's several ways that we develop projects. Much of our infrastructure is older and we have several studies that we look at all of them to come up with project areas. And we don't look at just water or just sewer, we try to look at it collectively. So when we come in, much like we did in the downtown master utility, we're doing a comprehensive project. There are areas that are driven by sewer cavins or age of infrastructure versus water. But we have, there's lots of studies that we have that we include all of those in, also working with Public Works in terms of their scopes of projects as well.
Elizabeth?
I feel like for about 10 years, we've talked about a pump station at the end of Dinwiddie or the end of Washington. Is that part of this or is that something else and are we ever going to have that?
James?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. That project's currently under design. We're looking into the permitting for that because we have to get a permit from the Corps. So it's going to be a two-phase project and we're looking at construction starting on phase one, probably sometime next year.
And just so everybody understands, that's a stormwater pump station, not a sanitary sewer.
And because that, that's a budgeted project, or isn't it?
Correct.
Okay. But it's not part of what Erin's doing?
It is not part of this project, but is in that project area.
Okay.
And this relates to the whole project, two things, well, a lot of things. One is that the old or current cannot meet the demands for flow and for future development.
Just interim.
And then second, with all the crossconnections and separated, it impacts our responsibility to the EPA for what we put in the Lewisbeth River.
DEQ, and also, I mean, we've updated our design standards since 1910, so it's also been revised as well.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, I just wanted to highlight what Ms. Trimier said. This entire project has been in preparation for upgrades and new development in the downtown area. So as we move forward, we're creating the capacities and then meeting the needs as we move forward in the future.
Thank you so much. I would say that the city got its money's worth out of these old lines. Mr. Pace?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, our last presentation for this public work session tonight. Mr. Ball Baldwin, Deputy City Manager, will provide a brief update on support efforts to the city of Virginia Beach.
And good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council. This will be brief, but as we're all aware, you know, on Friday, May the 31st, the city of Virginia Beach Municipal Center, building number two, was the site of a, of a tragedy of a magnitude I really can't, I can't put into words. Just mention that's a lot of our operational staff, colleagues, the planning department, Public Utilities, Public Works, IT, permits and inspections. That's the staff that's in that building. In the aftermath of that event, localities from all across Hampton Roads, across the state and beyond were immediately reaching out to Virginia Beach, offering whatever type of support they could, not knowing what the city of Virginia Beach might need, but certainly offering condolences and for going through such an event. Of course, we were one of those localities. By Saturday morning, the city had staff from emergency management on-site working with the city of Virginia Beach, providing them assistance as they were, you know, working through all of those issues. And they provided assistance in a number of areas. One of the things the city had identified early on, they needed crisis counselors. They had an event on Monday, they had 130 counselors attend. The city also provided counselors. We had crisis counselors on-site during the course of the week. By the time we got to the end of the week on Friday, the need for city staff had been completed. The city said, you know, we don't need any additional assistance at this time. Everybody's aware, this is the kind of an event that will take years, if not decades, to get over. Nobody knows exactly what their needs may be, but we've continued to make sure they're aware that at any time they need any additional assistance from the city of Portsmouth, all they have to do is reach out and ask. I will mention that on that weekend, on the I will mention that on that weekend, on the Sunday, June the 2nd, City Manager from the city of Portsmouth and Norfolk met collaboratively to see if there was anything those two cities could do to provide any additional support and make sure we weren't providing, you know, the same kind of assistance, if it's something different we could do. So that meeting was, was held as well. And then I'll mention that by Monday, all of our departments within the city had reached out to our counterparts, the city of Virginia Beach independently, department by department, also offering any type of support, assistance. And up to this point, they haven't really asked for much, but they made the same comment. We don't know what the future holds for us, we don't know kind of where we're going, they're still trying to figure out their staffing and who goes where. So we continue to make, make that offer to them. And so, other than what I've just described, there have been no additional city resources requested by the city of Virginia Beach going forward. But again, depending on how things proceed in the future, should they reach out. And I will mention that kind of the support we're offering, that's been a very, a strong support from the rest of the Hampton Roads community as well. Every city, county is basically offering, you know, whatever they might be able to try to assist them in going through this very difficult time.
Well, I thank the entire administration for, for what you're doing and will do. We'll have a moment of silence during the regular session. We actually had two victims who were related to Portsmouth. One who, whose parents still live in Portsmouth, another whose father grew up in Portsmouth, went to Woodrow Stone High School, was class of 1960. So this was an attack on all of Hampton Roads, not just Virginia Beach. Thank you. Any questions about? While we're on the agenda, we have two public hearings tonight, one of which involves a cell tower, and it's been our practice that we have a court reporter present, so that we have a transcript. At that public hearing, I will ask all people who come to the lectern to make sure that they speak into the microphone and minimize hand gestures so that the transcript picks up language and not visual signals. In each case, the applicant will have 10 minutes to present the application. Then I'll call on Mr. Pace to, if there's any comments from the administration, we'll have the public hearing, and after the public hearing, we'll consider a motion on first reading. Okay? Everybody good on that? Any other comments on the agenda?
There are three city municipal reports. Of course, the city clerk will review those during the public, I mean, the City Council meeting tonight.
Okay. Any report packs?
We have no report, ma'am.
City Council liaison reports. We'll start with Elizabeth.
I do not have any liaison reports, but I have a question-
Sure.
...that's completely unrelated to anything.
All right.
But somebody in this room has the answer. Earlier today, I was tagged on a Facebook post about a brick building at the corner of, with a photo at the corner of Lincoln and Elm that has, it looks to be right across from the Lucas Building, and the caption on the photo said, "The city built another building, they ran out of money, and now it's being auctioned off." That's not a city building, is it?
That's old Lee's Market. It's old Lee's Market, it was a grocery store.
Well, that's what I thought.
No.
Right. It's not a city building.
I've been around more.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Paul, do you have any report?
No reports.
No reports.
No.
Okay. We do have a need for, whoever's phone that is, if you could silence it, please, and that would be a good opportunity for everybody to do that. We do have a need for a closed session. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
I move to go into closed meeting, A, pursuant to Virginia Code subsection 2.2-3711A.3 for the purpose of discussing the disposition of real property where a discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body specifically regarding Crawford Day, and B, pursuant to Virginia Code subsection 2.2-3711A.1 for the purpose of discussing and considering prospective candidates for and appointees to boards and commissions.
Thank you. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
We have a motion on the floor to go in closed session that's been seconded. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes, we're in closed session, and all those people not needed for this closed session, please exit the room.